So, thank you, uh, thank you so much, everybody, for coming out tonight. The way, the way we're gonna do this, as, as you all know, uh, every month I do a town hall. Some of them are about something specific, some of them are just general town halls about whatever's on anybody's mind. This is a specific one. This is to talk about, uh, my nomination of, uh, interim Chief Thodey to be the chief of police, uh, for the Hartford Police Department, and, uh, to hear, uh, an opportunity for the community at large to hear, uh, a moderated discussion with Chief Thodey. So, what I'd like to do is just start out, I'm gonna talk a little bit about how I came to the decision to make this nomination, uh, and then I'm happy to take some questions, uh, directly from the audience, and, and we can talk for fifteen, twenty minutes, uh, and then invite our panel to come up. And we have a broad panel representing a whole bunch of different organizations and perspectives, uh, and, uh, partners throughout the city, uh, so that we have an opportunity for each of those representatives, each of those groups, to ask questions directly of our nominee, uh, and to have all of you here and all of you who are watching get the opportunity to hear that discussion and, uh, and hear Chief Thodey directly. This is, of course, just one stage, uh, in the nominations process. I wanted to hold this town hall so that I could have this conversation directly with you, and so you could hear directly from Chief today. The council will conduct their own process as well, and typically that includes a public hearing, it includes, uh, a committee of the whole, it may include committee meetings, so there are multiple stages to follow. This is not the only step in the process, but I wanted to make sure that I had the chance to stand up in front of you and explain why I made the nomination before the conversation that followed. Uh, I also wanted just everybody to know that Hartford Public Access TV is videotaping tonight, so that will be online and available to the public, and will be broadcast, so feel free to share that, uh, information with your friends and neighbors, and then spread the word that that, uh, information will, that that video will be online. I also want to thank Pastor Steve Camp, uh, from Faith Congregationalist Church, uh, who has generously offered to moderate the discussion tonight, uh, and when we call the panel up, I think he will likely introduce all of the panelists who are here. Uh, again, I think we've got a good, uh, panel with a broad range of perspectives, uh, but I appreciate Pastor Camp's willingness to, uh, moderate that discussion. So, let me just start with the reasons that I came to the decision to make this nomination, to nominate our interim chief to be chief. As, uh, as you probably know, many of you know, my plan when Chief Rosado decided to pursue opportunities in the private sector last spring was to conduct a national search, uh, and, uh, that was, uh, my intention, and I frankly do believe that if we were to make a change in leadership right now, that I'd wanna do a national search, I'd wanna go out and find out all of the options, uh, all over the country that are available to us. There are a number of reasons that, uh, I have come to the conclusion that I think that, at this point, continuity and stability in leadership is the right thing for the Hartford Police Department and for our city. First and foremost, and probably the most importantly, is that over the last eight months, uh, I've had the chance to work very closely with Chief Thodey, uh, and I believe that he is somebody who shares my priorities and our city's priorities, uh, meaning he is committed, I believe, and I have seen it, and I'm happy to talk about what I've seen, uh, to transparency, uh, to taking accountability very, very seriously, to building partnerships with, uh, our community, and in particular with those organizations that are on the ground working to make our city safer. I have seen in Chief Thodey a willingness to, to listen. Uh, I am somebody who always likes to hear bad news, who welcomes criticism, I've seen that same spirit, uh, in Chief Thodey, because, uh, the only way you make things better is to have honest dialogue about where they can be better, uh, and so I've seen him, uh, demonstrate that willingness to listen and to drive change. Uh, and, uh, and I believe that, you know, after serving in the department for more than twenty years, that, uh, he is committed to this work and committed to this city. I also think that this is a time when, while we have made some important progress in, uh, reducing some types of crime, we continue to battle with gun violence, we have seen a persistent level of gun violence, and in some neighborhoods, particularly the northeast, we had a tough year this past year. We have a number of initiatives that are underway, uh, to tackle that, uh, and, uh, I think that we right now have a level of partnership between our department and a number, again, a number of those organizations that are on the ground doing the work side by side, uh, that is a stronger partnership than we've had in a long, long time. And so, uh, for all those reasons, I think that this is the moment that we should stay the course. I did not make that decision or come to that conclusion lightly, uh, I talked with a lot of people about it. Uh, I talked with a lot of our partners throughout the city, I talked with residents, talked with community leaders, NRZ leaders, lots of folks, uh, and solicited lots of opinions. There's not gonna be anything that, uh, at least I haven't found anything, uh, yet in my four years that everybody agrees on, uh, but I do think that there is, in general, uh, a sense that national searches may have their upsides, but they also have their downsides, uh, and that if we have the opportunity to continue with a leader who is moving the department in the right direction, recognizing that we've got a lot of work to do, that, uh, that might be the right thing to do. Uh, and, um, I also think it, as I was having those conversations and thinking very, very hard about it, um, just recognizing the fact that if we were to conduct a search and bring somebody, uh, else in from the outside, two things would be true. One, we'd be talking about at minimum months of months of instability, as we head into another summer, when we have critical work, uh, to do to prepare and make sure that we are ready as possible, uh, to try to make sure that, uh, we are building as safe a city as possible this summer and beyond. The second thing is, if we did do that search and at the end brought somebody in, we'd be bringing in the fourth leader of this department in two years. Uh, and, uh, any organization that undergoes that much change, uh, experiences a lot of instability. And, uh, so I do believe that, uh, as where I think we're on the right track with a partner that I, uh, believe is, uh, is making the right changes, but again, uh, recognizing there's a lot of work to do, that this is the time where continuity and stability, uh, is the right thing to do for the city. I fully acknowledge that that is a change from what I had planned to do and what I said I planned to do, uh, I acknowledge that, and one of the reasons I wanted to have this portion of the conversation first is to give you a chance to ask your questions and comment on that. Uh, but again, it's not a decision that I took lightly, uh, I've thought very, very seriously about it, I've talked, uh, with a lot of people, uh, solicited a lot of viewpoints, and ultimately, uh, I think I, I have a responsibility as mayor to, to use my, my best judgment to try to, uh, make the right decision for our departments and for our city, and at the end of the day, I believe this is the right one, but I look forward to this conversation, and then look forward to hearing the one that follows. So with that, I'm gonna open it up, and, uh, we'll probably go, again, for about fifteen or twenty minutes now, but you're not really here to hear from me, uh, but we'll go fifteen, twenty minutes now if there are that many questions, and after that, we'll move on to the conversation, uh, with interim Chief Thodey. Councilman Mitchum.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my question is, prior to making this decision to nominate, uh, interim Chief Thodey, how many people did you interview, and how many of them were people of color?
So, I don't know if interview is the right word, I mean, I, I have talked with, uh, some members of the police force who have, you know, left the police force, and I think would have been interested in coming back. I have also talked with our department, uh, met, I'm familiar with and know a lot of the folks who are, uh, in the command staff of our department, so I, um, I thought very, very hard about who we have in leadership in our department. I think we've got a great team right now between our, uh, act, interim Chief Thodey and his fellow Assistant Chief, Rafael Medina, um, and, uh, I, I really respect that partnership, and, uh, I think that Assistant Chief Medina, uh, was more interested in continuing that partnership than in pursuing that job. So, since, at the end of the day, my conclusion was that stability is the right thing, that really meant looking inside the department. And to me, I haven't worked closely with the department, haven't heard from many folks in the department, you know, I, I believe that that right choice is, uh, is Chief Thodey. But, uh, I'm not sure I would describe those as formal interview process, what I did do is, you know, again, think really hard about whether this was the time to make another change.
I didn't wanna say, I can get the federal on again, because my neighbor would, it's okay.
Here, let me, uh, we'll get this to you, but, uh, let me just go, go, and try to go and turn here.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Mayor, I have been around, I've lived in this city for a long time, I've known Chief Thodey, or of Chief Thodey, for a long time. What my concern is, I understand that he's grown to be quite the resource for you, quite the, uh, chief, um, his grant-writing ability, his management ability, there's a, a lot of positives, okay? My problem is, are the negatives. Is the negatives from his past gonna come back and haunt us? And what I mean by that is, when he's meeting out justice or punishment in the future, are the, are, are the officers in the police department gonna come back and say, "Hey, wait a minute, you did that ten years ago," or "You got away with this ten years ago." There's about three or four things in his record, uh, in the city and out of the city that I'm concerned at, that people are gonna circle around and say, "You're judging me differently than you were judged." And I am just tired of embarrassment, and I don't wanna see any more settlements in this city. Thank you.
Excellent, I, I appreciate the question. So, uh, I am aware of one thing, uh, in, in Assistant Chief Thodey's background, I'm sure he'd be happy to speak with, speak to this if it comes up, and I'm sure he'd be happy to speak to this in the few, in the future forums that follow. Um, and, uh, I'll say a little bit, but again, I, I, you should hear directly from him, and I'm sure he'll, he'll address it, but, um, I am aware that eleven years ago, he, uh, got into, uh, he was involved in a fight that he probably should've stayed away from, uh, and, um, he was, uh, disciplined for that. Um, I'll let him talk with you about that incident, his experience, what he took from that, but what I have seen is a chief that takes accountability very, very seriously, um, that, uh, takes the process of reviewing, uh, complaints and reviewing, um, recommendations very, very seriously, uh, and, uh, and has not shied away from imposing discipline, imposing more significant discipline that's been recommended, uh, from, uh, shining a light on things that frankly, in the past, probably would have, uh, either been swept under the rug or, or treated lightly. So, that is, that's an incident I am well aware of, uh, it's an incident that I know, you know, chiefs, uh, talk publicly about, at the end of the day, uh, a, an off-duty, uh, out-of-uniform, uh, mistake eleven years ago, uh, to me doesn't change my view about, uh, his ability to lead this chief, uh, lead this department at this time. I will say, what you said about his administrative ability is, is certainly consistent with my experience, I think he's the strongest administrator that I've seen in that role. Um, I also think that he combines that administrative strength with a real commitment to transparency and accountability, and also with a willingness to get out and build partnerships.
I'm just worried about what's potentially in his background and in his IA files, such that he's not going to be able to meet out the justice.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen that, I mean, we've, he has been in this, in the interim role for eight months, I haven't seen that be an issue. He's, he's had to impose discipline, I think he has the, the respect of the department and a recognition from the department that, in a lot of ways, it's a new day, that there is a level of, of discipline and accountability that, uh, in some ways, this department may be needed a long time ago, and I've seen him be willing to, uh, to take the lead on that.
Is there a reason you didn't have Chief Medina?
Well, again, so I, 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 so the question is, is the reason I didn't choose Chief Medina. Uh, I talked with Chief Medina all the way back, you know, eight months ago, I think he is, he enjoys the role that he's in, he's happy with the role that he's in, he wasn't seeking the position, and he appreciated the partnership and, and expressed his view that he thought that continuing with the current leadership was actually the right thing to the department, so I respect his, his, I respect Chief Medina very, very much, and, uh, while I solicited many, many opinions, uh, his was an important one.
Good evening, Mayor. First, I wanna be transparent and say that he has reached out to the voices, we have not been able to meet with him because of conflict and schedules, but I do appreciate, uh, him reaching out. Um, I'm interested in community policing. That's one of the things, the voices felt that they did well with Rovella and Foley when they were here, when we had issues in North Hartford, we would work together and kinda address them with some of the famous CSO officers that are in the crowd tonight. So, I hear you when you say that his administrative skills, his grant-writing skills, is something that you really latched on to, but I'm more interested in what you feel about his, his ability to implement some community policing, 'cause I, I still can't remember the last police chief name, because he was not engaged in the community. So, if you could, not Rovella, the, the one after that one, that guy, so he never would come outside, you know, and so, I really wanna understand what does community policing look like in leadership from you.
Um, well, look, I don't wanna speak for him, 'cause I want him to address that, and, and you deserve to hear that directly from him, but I do wanna just stress, when I, what I said was, I do think he's the strongest administrator I've seen, but if he was just the strongest administrator we've seen, I wouldn't be standing here today, I wouldn't have made that nomination for that reason. Uh, it's that, it's that administration plus taking very, very seriously the, the principle that I've tried to state from the beginning, which is, and I know, I think we're on the same page, so you'll probably hear something similar, uh, later, but, to me, one of the mistakes that our department made over the years is that community policing became an assignment within the police department, it became a subspecialty, that if you were a CSO, you were responsible for community policing, whereas community policing really is an ought-to-be, uh, an ethos, an attitude, a way of engaging, a way of building relationships and trust, and that's gotta be modeled, you know, from the top down, and I have seen that be something that Chief feels very strongly about, has pushed his, uh, officers and the men and women of the department to do, and I know cares deeply about, but I don't wanna speak for him, so you should, you should, uh, you know, hopefully he'll, I'm sure that'll come up in the conversation. Let me also just say that, in addition to the panelists, there's gonna be questions, um, and we're gonna be collecting written questions, uh, that will be passed up to Pastor Camp, and assuming that there is time, and hopefully there, there will be, uh, that those questions will be answered, so please feel free to submit some of those questions as well. Yeah, oh, Eddie, I told you, you'd, you'd get to answer one.
I want to ask a short question. Can you please come to all meetings before you make the decision, so everybody could say, Wecker could say, because he didn't come to a Wecker meeting yet, and so he could say, all neighborhoods, uh, how they feel about him, and so, it's fair on the table what, what Hyacinth would say, what, what my group would say, what the North End would say, I don't wanna miss make a judge, judgment tonight and say blanket this and that, because then people could say, "You didn't go to her group," or "You, you forgot how to come towards the..."
Sure, no, I, I appreciate it. Um, so, I know that, uh, interim Chief Thodey has visited a lot of NRZs, um, and, uh, I don't know whether that it's feasible to, to hit every one of the NRZs prior to a council vote, but, um, but I have talked with a lot of folks, including people who are active in, in all of those organizations, and, uh, you know, I, I, I think community engagement comes in many, there are many different forms, and, and sometimes, it's, it's just getting out there and talking to folks and, and reaching out, and so... But the other thing I would say is, you know, this is an opportunity, one of the reasons we wanna do this in this forum, and also to broadcast it, is so that everybody gets a chance to, to see, uh, that, that conversation. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I've, um, been through these, uh, these things before, and I've seen it when they've gone in-house, and I've seen it when they've gone on the national search, and, many times, the national search, you know, we look at green, greener pastures far away, always seem like they're greener, but many times we've bought a pig in the post, so, uh, if somebody has been doing the acting position for eight months, and they've been doing a good job and moving in the direction, they should be, maybe they should be given that consideration, because, one of the things, I've been a union guy all my life, I don't know how many people in this room know me, but I was president to the Hartford Federation of Teachers, and I represented teachers, uh, for many years, and, one of the things that I always believed in is, uh, that there should be a career ladder, and that people should be rewarded for good performance, and, you know, you start as a police officer, you move up to sergeant, you move up to lieutenant, you're doing a good job, you're evaluated, people think you're, the community thinks highly of you, you're doing a good job, you should be given the first dibs on a promotion, so, just food for thought. Thank you.
Thanks, Representative.
Thank you. Hello, how you doing today? Good evening. Uh, my name is Michael Manson, I'm a community activist, and, um, I have a question for the chief when he come up. Um, I just finished capital for social service assistant certificate, and part of the certificate, I had to get my mental health first aid, and my teachers told me, actually not my teacher, the, the instructor of the mental aid, mental health first aid, said, across the country, they're starting to train officers how to recognize mental health. And the reason why I say that, because I found out sixty percent of violent crimes that happen in Hartford, North End, is due to untreated mental health. And me understanding, knowing, me knowing that, because I was untreated for years, and I have a great relationship with the office right there. Um, when I was untreated, I was arrested over twenty times for domestic violence, murder, sought second, I was on investigation for the 2008 parade shooting, I know everybody didn't forget about that. Um, so, being treated for the past four and a half, four and a half years, they're getting a parking ticket, and I actually put my part in this year, and so I've been reaching out for the chief, also the mayor, and everyone else, because I created the first-ever mental health pre-screening day, where I'm trying to help my community to recognize mental health is a big part of the change of the violence. You know, understand? So, my thing is, for the chief, is he's gonna, um, suggest that his officers start getting training for mental health. And another thing, you didn't answer his question about, is you interviewed blacks or his experience for the job.
So, um, thank you for, for those points, and I'm sure the chief will address it, and I think there's no, as we've talked about before, and there's no question that you're absolutely right about the role that mental health plays, uh, in some of the violence that we see, in trauma and, uh, untreated, uh, with untreated underlying medical conditions, and also untreated unresponded to trauma, um, and, um, I think that's, uh, that is critical. I think the department recognizes that, the way you do that effectively, I think, is by making sure that the department is working in partnership with organizations and groups that specialize in that treatment. Um, so, I'll, I'll leave, uh, the rest of that. So, look, Assistant Chief Medina is, uh, a Latino, uh, again, he was not interested in the position, I have heard from, uh, some, uh, a former retired, uh, police officer, uh, or, uh, I guess he left as a deputy chief who was interested, uh, I sat down with him and had a conversation, uh, he was African-American. Ultimately, as I said, um, I did not cast a broad net and call for, uh, all interested applicants, because at the end of the day, my, my view was that if we were gonna take that approach, we oughta go as wide as possible, and see every option out there, and do a true national search. Uh, but, if we have a chance to maintain stability, then we should do that. I also wanna address, um, one other thing, because I really think this is, this is important, this comes back a little bit to that question, um, both Alyssa and Janice asked about, you know, community policing, but also administration and management. Sometimes those things overlap. You know, if you're gonna be effective at community policing, you need to have a system in place to know where every single one of your cars are, and to make sure that your command staff, all the way down, down to the sergeants, have systems in place to make sure that their officers, and I say this respectfully, because our men and women of our department do a phenomenal job, and they're working hard all the time, but we need to also make sure that there is supervision that's guided by data and information to make sure that we're deploying them most effectively, that they are where they are, could be most visible and have the biggest impact, that they're out of their cars as often as possible, that we're controlling overtime, not just so that we can save money, but so that when we need to make investments in public safety, we've got the resources to do it. So, I think it's important to recognize that having a strong manager also has a big effect on your ability to execute as an effective community policing organization, because if you don't have control over those things, then you may just not have the ability to pull the levers that actually make a difference, uh, out on the street. You know, a, um, a police chief, I want a police chief who is out there talking to people, but, much like my own role, there's also an awful lot you gotta do in the office, and, it's not always you that has to be on the, out, uh, you know, shaking hands, you want the men and women of the department making that engagement, but you need to make sure that you're putting them in a position to be successful, and so it's that balance that I do think is really important. A couple more, and then again, I wanna make sure that we, and if you, let me just ask, if you're on the panel, please save your questions till, till the panel, um, and, uh, although we asked one, if you're on the city council, maybe save your questions till the council process, um, but, um, let me see if there are, is there, yes, over here.
Thank you. So, um, it's more of a comment than a question, but I keep hearing about stability, and, um, it doesn't feel like it's stable out here, um, in our communities, in our neighborhoods. Um, record numbers of people have been killed this year in the state of Connecticut by police, so we are in a very unstable environment right now, especially when it comes to choosing who's gonna be leading our police department, um, so I don't know what stability we should be prioritizing, or, you know, um, US mayor, or the city and city council when they vote. Um, I feel like this, instead of, uh, thinking of it as, as an opportunity to keep things as they are, which they're not good, um, we should maybe look at it as an opportunity to get it right and have a good candidate.
It's a totally fair point, obviously, my view is that we don't have to choose one over the other, 'cause I think we have the opportunity to have stability with somebody who, having worked, you know, with him very, very closely for the last eight months, I think is a very strong candidate. I, I also think, I, I wanna, I wanna acknowledge and respect what you're saying about how people feel out there. I also think it's important to say that, um, a couple things, one, I do think that stability is important in that situation, eh, for, partly because of everything that you're talking about. You know, departments, when they go and undergo change, and you have someone that's coming in, has to learn all the department, learn all the people, learn all the processes, learn the city, uh, there's risks that come with that. The other thing is that we have had, we had one incident this year, anytime our officers have to use force, it is, uh, it is a tragedy, especially if that force, uh, is fatal, and we did have an incident this summer, uh, when our officers used deadly force. And I think that what I, as mayor, would ask of a police chief in that situation is maximum transparency, uh, and a push for getting as much information out into the public as possible, as quickly as possible. There are a lot of departments where that doesn't happen. What I saw, when we went through that incident, and that's the call that all of us pray we never get, uh, but when we got the word that that had happened, that very night, I remember at three o'clock in the morning, listening to Assistant Chief Thodey, or interim Chief Thodey, push and press the state's attorney's office to release video and release all information as quickly as possible, and, is that approach to a crisis like that, that I want to know our police chief is gonna take. So, I have experienced that alongside him and seen the kind of response that I would wanna see. Uh, I pray that we never have another incident like that. I, as you know, in that particular incident, it was found, and found by the state's attorneys, that, uh, the use of force was justified, that our officers' lives were indeed at risk, that the person, uh, who ultimately was killed had taken the weapon from a police officer and was involved in a struggle right then, and had full control of that weapon. Uh, a situation that I, I, it's one of the reasons why I have enormous respect for the men and women, uh, of the police department, because they never know when they're gonna be in that situation. I, just two nights ago, we had the Purple Heart Ceremony for Joe Kiddick, who, uh, you remember, uh, had her throat slashed responding to a domestic call, so I, I have enormous respect for the work they do, but I acknowledge that there have been horrific, uh, and around the country, uh, some horrifically unjustified, uh, incidents. Thank God we haven't had that here, at least while I'm here, and the one incident that we had, I saw the kind of response and commitment to transparency that I'd wanna see from my chief.
I can talk louder.
Well, I think it's, it's being broadcast, so you want everybody out there to hear you too.
I think it was, uh, Chief Medina, he was, he was, who, was he a chief? Who, who was the, the less, Rosado? And, and one of, he, he had these coffee talks in, in our communities, and one, I, I asked him about deadly force, and, and in a case like that, I, I asked him, "Why does a police officer have to empty his gun into a violent suspect?" Because, you know, one or two choice bullets can take a person down, not in their vital organs, and, I've always had a problem in, in observing this in the media, where, you know, uh, they go for the head, or the, you know, the, they go for the kill, and I don't think it's, it's, uh, necessary to do that. Also, um, I don't know what their, um, employment, uh, choosing of, of who, who gets to be a police officer, but I've always felt that anyone that's been in a war zone, I think you might've been in a war zone at one time, uh, and, and in battle, are probably the least qualified to be police officers, because they can have that instant recall and react, overreact to a, you know, a, a situation, and, um, that's... officers, because they can have that instant recall and react, overreact to a, you know, a situation. And that's my comment.
I have a few, a few responses. So, a couple, a couple things. One, just to your first question, even in that deadly incident, our officers did not empty their magazines. There were, I think, three shots fired. But let me say, more importantly, you don't hear as many times as I do about the times when the use of force is avoided, and it happens regularly. It happens because the men and women of our department are trained first to de-escalate. There have been situations, in this case, where this individual lost his life. He had said to multiple people earlier in the day, "I plan to either run, or if I can't run, I plan to die at the hands of a cop today." That's not the only one this year where we've seen that happen. There is at least one other incident I know of where, and I think there are more than one, but at least one other that I know of, where an individual hadn't expressed their plan to get themselves killed by police officers. And not only did officers not fire a shot, they safely disarmed, got into custody, got help, got protection for the person who was involved. So, more often than not, what I've seen is our department doing everything possible to avoid the use of force. And again, I pray to God, and I don't say that as a phrase, I pray that we don't have an incident where our officers ever use force unjustified, or where they ever have to use force even when it's justified, because they're gonna have to live with that for the rest of their lives, even when they're acting in self-defense. So, that's one answer. To the other piece, I did serve in a combat zone. I was not in combat. I don't necessarily agree with you, though, because particularly in the conflicts that we've seen recently, many times, you have men and women going into very difficult situations where their job actually is to try to build relationships and to de-escalate situations. So, there may be some, you know, folks whose experience makes it hard for them to come back and be in this kind of job, and there may be others for whom it's very good, you know, and for whom, for whom it, that's not the case, and they're outstanding officers.
Hi, my name is Juan Alhure. I live in the South End. Something that you mentioned earlier, which I thought was pretty interesting, was accountability. And I've heard you say that you wanted to try to find the best candidate possible, the best of the best from across the nation. And what I heard you say was that you actually considered two candidates that weren't interested in the job, and a candidate who's already doing the job. And my question to you is, how, how can we, as a people, hold you accountable to make sure that you're gonna do what you say that you do?
It's a great question. And let me just clarify, I talked to our Assistant Chief, and I know, of course, our command staff at our department, and I believe that of the folks who are in our department, Chief Thody's the right one to lead it. I talked to one other person who had, who had reached out to me because he was interested in the position, and I met with him and sat down with him, and ultimately, my judgment was that staying the course was the right thing. But let me answer this way. As mayor, when we see a spike in violence, I am rightly held responsible for that. When there is a shooting in our community, and somebody is killed, I try to join the Mothers United Against Violence, who stand with that family, and stand with those parents. I go to those funerals. I sit with our young people, including our young people who have been involved in a lot of stuff, and talk directly with them, about how can we do better with them. But at the end of the day, when you elected me, you put the responsibility on me to try to build the safest community we can. We've made some progress, and we've got a ton of work to do. But what I would say is, as the person who ultimately, and I say this not as a complaint, I, I say this as the person who is rightly held responsible and held accountable for how we do, I have to use my best judgment about how we get there. And sometimes, that means making tough decisions. Sometimes it means looking at something a new way after I looked at it a different way before, but considering all the facts, considering all the information, knowing that I'm ultimately responsible, and I'm gonna be held responsible, to make the best decision I can. And that's what I'm trying to do in this situation. With that, 'cause I wanna, I wanna make sure that we have time for the panel discussion and the Q and A, why don't we, why don't we end my segment there? And let's ask our panelists to please come up. Let's ask Pastor Camp to come, please come up, and ask Interim Chief Thody to please come up. And I think what I would do is ask Interim Chief Thody to start with just a very brief, there's gonna be a long conversation, so a very brief introductory set of remarks, and then turn it over to Pastor Camp to moderate the panel. And thank you to all of the panelists who agreed to be part of this, and thank you again to everybody for being here today.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanna briefly say, 'cause I wanna make sure that we get to questions, and that we can answer the questions for the panel, and I know that we still have to introduce them as well. I'm humbled and honored for this, for this nomination, and for this opportunity. I've spent a good portion of my life here in Hartford, as serving the community as a police officer, better part of twenty-four years here, and it is, it's truly an honor to be considered to lead this, this great community, lead this great department in this great community. So, just wanted to be very, to be very brief, but just how much I appreciate this conversation. All the conversations that have led up to this, I see a lot of familiar faces in the room over, over the years here, and relationships that we've built, and I also look forward to future conversations and continuing the dialogue. I think that's how we make our police department better, that's how we make our community better, and that's how we push forward. So, without further ado, I will turn it over to Pastor Camp.
Thank you, chief. My name is Steve Camp. I serve as pastor of Faith Congregational Church, and I've been asked to moderate this discussion, so be kind to me, please. I thought the way that I would like to ask that we do this is, these questions, of course, are gonna go to the chief, but I know that you probably have words that you want to share, and I'm gonna ask you to be brief with the words that you want to share, and get to the question that you want to ask. Are we together on that?
Yes, sir.
They heard you. And, and so, I hope that this is a time where we can get as much information out as possible, that the chief has an opportunity to really respond to what you, as leaders, are asking him to respond to. The speeches and whatnot may be great in other settings, but tonight, it's about him, not about you. And then afterward, we, we're gonna, if you've got a, I guess there's some cards going around, and if we have time, young man back there has got some cards, and if you've got questions, then you can fill it out, and maybe we'll have time for a few of them at the end. But, we really do want this to be a discussion, if at all possible. And so, the first thing I'd like to do, chief, if it's okay, is if we start here, Deborah, and just, just say who you are, and where you're from, and the organization, and then we'll go all the way down, and then we'll come back with the first question. Is that okay? All right. So, Deborah, would you start?
Thank you so much, but can we just take a twenty-four second moment to recognize and to honor Kobe Bryant and all the individuals that we lost this weekend? And twenty-four seconds.
Give me the mic, please.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Deborah Davis with Mothers United Against Violence, the program director. Reverend Brown, can you raise your hand? Our co-founder, Reverend Brown.
Hemiera Beckman, president of Mothers United Against Violence.
My name is Alok Bhatt. I'm the Community Defense Coordinator for the Connecticut Immigrant Rights Alliance.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Ronald Holmes. I'm the pastor of Gethsemane Missionary Baptist Church, and I'm the president of the Greater Hartford Inter-Dominational Ministerial Alliance.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Curtis Porter III, and I'm the Family Engagement Specialist for the Craig Open Choice Program, and this evening, I'm representing as chair of the LGBTQ+ Commission for the City of Hartford.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jane Foster, and I'm president and CEO of Interval House, which is Connecticut's largest domestic violence agency, and we serve Hartford.
Good evening. My name is Erica Roberts. I'm a youth development advisor for Compass Youth Collaborative.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Erica Crowley. I'm a member of the Permanent Commission on the Status of Hartford Women.
Good evening. I'm Haya Cindyani, representing Hartford Next, former Hartford 2000.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lisa Quatron-Journey-Holm, and I'm the coordinator of Access Network Housing Facilitator.
Good evening. I'm Officer Anthony Rinaldi. I'm the Hartford Police Union President-elect.
And I understand that the ACLU was wanting to be present. They did send a couple of questions, when we have time for those. So, I'm gonna ask if, Officer, would you?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm representing, my name is Margarita Rodriguez, and I am representing Sama. Sorry.
Say it again on the microphone. Say it again on the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Margarita Rodriguez, and I am representing Sama. I am a merchant since 1987 in Park Street. So, I am here in this city since I was eighteen years old.
All right. Thank you. All right. So, would you take the first question?
Chief Thody, could you please explain how important it is for pay, healthcare, and retirement benefits in the next police union contract to compete with surrounding cities and towns, and also, how that's made it difficult to recruit, retain city residents as police officers?
Thank you, Officer Rinaldi. So, first and foremost, recruitment and retention of police officers has become a difficult thing across the country, not just here in Hartford, but, but across the country. Our numbers of applicants have gone down over the years, and that's challenging. It is also very important for us to be competitive in the workforce, just like any other private sector, or any other public sector, we wanna attract the best officers, the best potential officers that we can. That being said, it's no secret that as a, as a city, we went through some financial difficulties. We have, we've seen financial difficulties before, and most recently, we had some of the most challenging ones when it comes to union contracts. While I don't envy the mayor's responsibility in that area, that is, that is something that, you know, that the mayor has to deal with. As a, as a police chief, and also as a resident, I respect what had to be done, and what has to be done to make sure that we have a vibrant city that has money to run the city. So, I know that the Hartford Police Union, as well as other unions in the city, had to give up some concessions to make sure that we were financially stable. It is my hope that we are able to, in the, in the upcoming contract negotiations, as the city stabilizes itself financially, my hope is that we're able to adequately compensate our police officers, but, but also others in the city. Healthcare is important, all the benefits are important. We do not wanna lose, we don't, we do not wanna lose good folks from either internally in the city, or good folks that come in from the outside in our recruitment efforts for new police officers. You know, that being said, we have some programs here that may come up, that may come up later, but if they don't, I'll address them quickly, like the Explorer Program, and like the PAL Program, and like the Cadet Program, where we cultivate a lot of our young people early on, and once they catch the bug for policing the city that they grew up in, we are seeing these individuals, now that those programs are vibrant and are on our staff, we are seeing those individuals move through those programs and become police officers. And in talking to them, in interviewing them, especially when they're, they're moving from, from one, one group to another, just a week or two ago, I had the honor of doing the Explorer promotional ceremony, where we promoted a new Explorer chief, and a bunch of the ranks that came on down. And when they were doing the introductions and the announcements, we had a, we had a recruit, a police recruit that was in the academy, that was there on the weekend, on his own time, because he had come through the Explorer Program, and he had gone all the way up to Chief in the Explorer Program, and then moved on to become a Hartford police officer. We also had cadets there that had moved from the Explorer Program into the Cadet Program, so it was, it was really rewarding to see that that pipeline is working. But in my interviews with those folks, I don't think they'd police another community, regardless of a pay difference or a benefit difference. That being said, I agree, it is important that we work on that, and we work together to try to make this a place that everyone wants to work, and we become more competitive.
Thank you. Marguerite?
Oh, okay. Chief, my, I have a son that is a police officer, and I have, wow, a lot of respect for the police. But my question is, as a merchant in Park Street, in the last year, we have a very good relationship with the police officers, and Lieutenant Santiago is excellent. And we want to know, what are your plans for Park Street? Because we don't wanna lose the ones that we have in the area. They build the relationship with the merchants and with the community. And also, my second question is, what are your plans for all community? Not only for the South, but the North End, and I would like, we would like to know that.
Thank you for the question. So, plans for all community, we, we should get comfortable. That, that's a long, that's a long answer. As far as Park Street goes, there's a lot of issues that come up in the city where we are dealing with, we are in the middle of, of the, of the problem. One thing about Park Street is that I think we've made great strides in that, in that corridor. You know, as a police administrator, whether as the interim chief, or whether as an assistant chief, or going back in my career when I was in the neighborhood community policing plan, in the zone, in the zone and district model, we look at crime, we look at, we also look at quality of life. The reason that our officers go to the NRZ meetings, the reason that I go to the NRZ meetings, is to listen to people. And Park Street was a concern for a period of time, probably about two years ago, we really started to see an increase in, in drug sales and other issues that were impacting merchants on a regular basis. We met with a lot of people, Sama included, in fact, Sama kinda spearheaded a lot of it, and we identified some strategies to go in and do some long-term fixes, not, not putting police officers in neighborhoods for weeks, or maybe even a month at a time, it's trying to put out a quick fire, and then leaving just to have it flare up again. We dealt with these, these problems in a much more holistic way. Lieutenant Santiago was instrumental in that, along with Captain Gabe Loriano, and along with Lieutenant Boisvert, who is Lieutenant Santiago's counterpart on the other side. We addressed those issues on Park Street, and, and those have held. We've, we've had some, some good successes there, you know, keeping the merchants safe, keeping people safe as they're coming in and out. So, that's an example of how, if we all sit down and work together, we can come up with solutions that aren't just quick fixes. I think that's something that law enforcement has done. I've seen it done here in Hartford for many, many years, where we come up with the quick fix. How do we just quiet these things down for a little while? And that's not the best way to do business. The best way to do business is collaboration, long-term fixes, solving problems, not just crime, and that could include, that could include service organizations, social service organizations, it can include a lot of things. And Park Street is a good example of how it can work. As far as maintaining people in those areas, so, I have a little bit of a, of a different opinion on this that can be, that can be somewhat, I guess, controversial to some degree. In my time here, and we're gonna probably get a question about community policing, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna tip my hand to it a little bit. In my time here, when I first came into law enforcement, community policing was the big buzzword. You know, everybody wanted to talk about how we were gonna better engage in community policing. So, what did law enforcement do? We made... We made community policing officers, CSOs. President-elect Rinaldi was one, a very successful one. So we took something that, when I talk to people that have been in the city for a long time, much longer than I've been here, they talk about knowing that beat officer that used to work in their neighborhood. They know by name, they still know him. They talk about those relationships that existed back then. When we converted to a community service model of policing, we took 17 neighborhoods, and we put a community service officer in each one of them. And what happened was, kind of, the rest of the department said, "That's no longer my job." You know, now it's the CSO's job. So when you had problem-solving issues, when you had, you know, kind of, longer-term issues, that might not even be police problems, they might be more socioeconomic problems, they might be economic problems, they pushed these issues to the CSOs. And the rest of the department became this response model, where all they were doing was listening to the radio, driving around, many times with their windows up, with the heat on, or with their windows up, with the air conditioner on, and not really engaging with the community like they had before we came up with this community policing model. When we make these 17 CSOs, the community ends up loving them, much like we just heard today. And when you, as an administrator or as a boss, go in and say, "Okay, it's time for something else, and we need to put another person in there to learn that role," the phone rings. And you hear about, "I don't want to lose my CSO." And it's loud. Hyacinth, right? So, but what we end up with is these kind of, these officers that stay in these roles for a long period of time, and the rest of the department doesn't get a chance to cycle through that and understand what it means to be a problem solver. So my view on community policing is that it has to be department-wide for it to make sense. We can't have, you know, one officer that answers the phone night and day and is sensitive to the community's needs beyond enforcing crime and enforcing the criminal code, and then the rest of the department that just is trying to move to the next call. They don't take a long-term approach. So we have to look at that. And some of that, I think, some of the ways that can work is, you know, is rotating people through some of these assignments, so they get a chance to see it. We do it in the Detective Bureau. We want our officers to see how the Detective Bureau works. We want them to learn about carrying on investigations and doing search warrants. And so we give them a couple of weeks, up to 90 days, in the Detective Bureau to test it out. It lets us evaluate those officers to see if the Detective Bureau is right for them. It gives them a chance to see what that work looks like. When they go back to patrol, their new knowledge permeates throughout all the other officers they interact with. And I think the community service model can be similar. So that is my goal, to try to find a way to catch this problem-solving policing model, to catch this, you know, we have to be able to build relationships to really be able to solve things long-term and to make it, to push it through the department without balancing that with people realizing that they might not see the same faces all the time. But I would rather have a community member like yourself have five or six cellphone numbers in your phone rather than one. I think that's, you know, ultimately my goal with building those community...
Chief, let me interject at this point, and just say to the panelists, please ask one question. And to you, Chief, we got about an hour. All right? And, so, next.
I feel a lot of pressure because I have to follow new rules, so, but I believe this segues directly into my question. So just for context, the CAN is the Coordinator of Access Network, and we manage the homeless response system. So our question is, how can we, the CAN, improve the partnership with the Police Department to assist folks who are experiencing homelessness, or around behaviors that are associated with homelessness? And one of the things you had mentioned just now was that all police officers should be somewhat community police officers. So will there be opportunity for the CAN to kind of do some training for the Police Department so that if they encounter a homeless individual, that, you know, they can provide resources rather than, you know, I think Michael had mentioned, you know, arrest on record? So instead of like being response with just the police, how can we give them additional resources? And will there be opportunity for us to do that?
Thank you.
Thanks for that question. So briefly, you'll, we are always, as a police department, looking for new ways to do things and new things to train on. So we would be very much, we have a lot of organizations that come in and talk to our police officers about varying issues. Homelessness, mental health being intertwined, and a serious issue that we're dealing with right now. As, again, as I go out and as I talk to community members, NRZs, faith-based leaders, that's how we kind of identify some of the issues. So we knew that homelessness was becoming what seems, at least, to be a bigger problem this year than it has been in the past, which is why I dedicated Officer Barrett to work with homeless outreach full-time. While we recognize that not everything is a police problem, police are involved in a lot of these problems and a lot of these issues. And, you know, Officer Barrett now, hopefully this Sunday, will be moving into a new office, and he will be working, he has been working on homeless outreach full-time. So he's a good conduit to strengthen that relationship, but I think coming in for trainings, like in-service trainings and things like that, would be a great opportunity for, one, our officers to know what you do and how you can help. A lot of our police officers respond to issues like mental health and homelessness, and they really want to help, but they don't always know how. So it's our obligation to get them the training, introduce them to folks like you and organizations like you so that they can provide better service.
Hyacinth?
Hello, Chief. So I have a question, and it's like this. Can you explain to the resident, what do you think, in your background and experience, make you a good fit and candidate for this position that makes the mayor feel that you are the right choice?
Sure. So I alluded to it earlier. You know, I have been, I've served this police department and this community for almost 24 years now, my entire adult life. I started here at age 20 as a cadet. Did my, was a recruit here, was an officer here, touched just about all of the bases on my way up through the ranks. Was a sergeant, lieutenant, captain, assistant chief, and now an interim chief. I think that it takes, there's a learning curve when you come into the Hartford community or any community. Every community is very unique. And I think, so number one, I think the knowledge and the relationships that I've built here over the years are important. Knowing the right folks to call, and when you have issues, when there, for example, something tragic happens, and we want to get a message out, and we want to be transparent, you have to know who out there that you should be talking to so that message gets out. We can't always, I can't always get everywhere to every NRZ that was spoken to earlier, but having those connections is important. The institutional knowledge here in the Police Department is important. I've seen, I think, upwards of 11 chiefs and interim chiefs come in and out of the Police Department, and I've honestly taken a little bit from each of them. It was mentioned earlier about Chief Ravello's outreach and community, you know, community involvement, that you take a little piece of that. You know, there was, when Chief Rosado came in, he really started to kind of turn the department in an accountability direction and hold officers more accountable, and discipline and accountability became a little bit more even across the board, taking a little bit from that. So, you know, I have served in the Detective Bureau here, I've served in the Patrol Division here, I was a district commander in the Neighborhood Policing Plan. That actually came here with Chief Harnett from New York. There was a lot of pros and cons to that, but we've taken a lot of the pros and pushed them forward, and we've moved the cons to the side. I've been in, I have been in administration, policy development, did some time writing grants, that was mentioned earlier. I've been responsible for the department's budget for the last five years or so, liaison to City Council for a number of years. And so I have served in a lot of capacities within the department that I think, and I've seen a lot. I don't pledge to be an expert on everything, but I certainly have a lot of knowledge about this community and this Police Department that I think will, if nominated, will help be effective quickly.
I'll go ahead and ask if Erica.
Good evening, Interim Chief Thody. It's good to see you again. So my name's Erica Crowley. I'm on the Women's Commission for the City of Hartford since last year. We are at about 10 out of 20 members, but we've been doing a lot over the past year. As you know, we've been really looking within the Police Department at issues around sexual harassment, particularly of women and LGBTQ folks and people of color within the department. And so we've been hearing, particularly the case of Officer Kelly Byerga, who was the Recruitment Officer and LGBTQ liaison. That was sort of the impetus of a lot of that work. And so what we found out sort of over the past year is that she wasn't alone. There were other people that were experiencing really severe harassment, and then other issues around sexism and homophobia and racism within the department were sort of coming out. And what ended up happening was that we had community members who knew we were paying attention to this, who started to come to our meetings and share stories with us of their interactions with the police. So I really just want to echo some of the comments about community policing and the relationships and how important that is. And so what we are hearing, as you know, and I've shared with you, and Chief Thody, you've come to our meetings and listened to us, and we've shared what residents have felt comfortable to tell us, and I appreciate that, I really do. People have been blamed for their own sexual assaults, their domestic violence, et cetera.
And your question?
And my question? My question is that clearly there are a lot of, these are big stakes issues. This is really important, and I mean, I've been losing sleep over this at night, and I think that you have too. And so my question really is that, given the timeframe of this nomination and then the council vote, which I think is happening February 24th, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not sure if people know that, given that you are the only nominee, I wonder, given the seriousness of this role and particularly issues around the Women's Commission, would you consider rejecting this nomination until there are other candidates in the running?
So thank you for that question. So this has been a process. You know, back in April, when I received the call from Mayor Bronin, I did not anticipate stepping into this role. You know, I was, I respect Chief Rosado a great deal. Chief Medina and I were working well together as assistant chiefs. So the mayor called and basically asked if I would be willing to step into this position. I was honored and humbled then to be given the responsibility to come and lead this department as I am still today. As far as the process goes, you know, I have served in the capacity of interim chief here now for nine months. I've done my absolute best to keep the department moving forward, but it is difficult to put your mark on a police department as an interim chief. There are a lot of, putting a command staff in place and things like that that you don't want to do if, in fact, someone else is going to come in. That's important for a chief to be able to do that. I have done, you know, my best in a plethora of areas, including bettering the culture and climate of the department. I have went out and, we have a researcher, two researchers actually, doing climate assessment now, so that we can try to find out where there are weaknesses in this department and where changes need to be made from an independent perspective. I am not in a position to turn down the nomination. I will not do that. I think that the relationships that I've built here, both internally in the department and externally in the department, have put us in a position to keep the momentum moving forward and to right some of the wrongs that we've had, and to continue some of the positive things that we have going on in the department forward. You know, if a different process was selected, I would have been extremely happy to participate in it. This is a job that I love, in a department that I love, in a city that I love and enjoy working in and living in. And this would have been a job that I would have pursued regardless of the, what the decision was to, for the process.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're going to, next, Erica.
Good evening, Chief. I'm Erica Roberts. So I actually have a two-part question. What training will be provided, other police officers, about the image of young, black and brown people? And how do you envision in helping the community address the misconceptions of police?
That's a great question. Thank you. So we have, as a department, we have, we are, as I said earlier, we're always seeking out new training. One of the things that we brought to the department years ago that was some of the better training that I've seen was the fair and impartial policing model and implicit bias model of policing. I think it resonated well with our officers. We're about ready to do a second iteration of that. But it really, even in the training, it talks about contact theory. I think a lot of the misconceptions, both of the department and even the department of some of the folks that we serve, comes from a lack of just general communication and general talking. That is part of that community engagement model that I talked about earlier. The more that you have interaction with people, not after a 911 call, or not while responding to an emergency call for service, because it's too late then, but prior to that. When an officer shows up at a call, if some of our, and the officer and the community doesn't have to look the same to understand one another. Tony, you correct me if I'm wrong, but you're a CSO in the North End, and developed a tremendous number of relationships and resources. And I think that that is, that's how we deal with it. There is some training out there, but I think for the officers that sit in a training room, it's not as impactful as going out and hearing the story. And one thing that I didn't address earlier about community policing is that, and Chief Ravello did do a good job of getting out into the community, and a lot of people in here know his name, but I would challenge people out in the community to name his command staff. And not a lot of people could do that. And one of the things that I will be doing and continuing to do is get others in the command staff out into the community so that they meet people and they have these discussions. And then when they're having discussions internally in the department, those experiences permeate in the department as well. So I think it's more reality than it is training. We will continue to seek out training, but the actual interactions are more important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Jane?
Thank you. Good evening. I think a number of these questions go to the culture within a police department. I think we've acknowledged over time that the police have not always been the best friends for victim advocates in domestic violence, because it's a tough business. When we came to you, when Interval House came to you, you welcomed us and brought in embedded an advocate with the department. So there's been a very significant change in that culture. Could you talk to us about culture change in the Police Department? Where it's happened, how it's happened, what more needs to be done there?
Appreciate that. So police officers are probably, like some other professions, tend to be creatures of habit. So changing anything within the Police Department, you know, even if we're giving out free things, there's a way for people to have an issue with that. So changing the culture is going to take time, and I believe it's a top-down approach. I've made myself available to new ideas. We do have a domestic violence outreach specialist embedded in the Police Department right now, and I'd like to expand that program. You know, we also hired a juvenile engagement specialist. So Manny comes out there and he, thank you, and he deals with some of our victims that are young people. We've kind of redefined youth, you know, we deal with people that are 25 and under because that's the population that's most impacted. But that, cops aren't experts at everything. In fact, they're not experts at a lot of things. They're jack-of-all-trades. And, you know, embedding folks like a domestic violence advocate and a juvenile specialist in the department, and we talked earlier about mental health, a lot of people don't know that we actually have a mental health worker that carries one of our radios. We've had this, we've actually had this for years, Unit 99. And when we go to emotionally disturbed person call, or when we deal with mental health crisis, we have, granted, you know, not 24 hours a day, seven days a week, if I could pull that off, I will definitely push to do that. But this is a social worker that comes and responds next to the police officer because they're better suited to deal with those kind of things. So culture change is difficult. How you do that, in my opinion, is that we make stronger policies so that we can better communicate our expectations. It's hard to hold officers accountable if they don't know what the expectations are. You know, one of the more recent processes that involves sexual harassment pushed a change in not just the Police Department's policy and method of dealing with those issues, but citywide. The worst thing that you... The worst thing that you can have when you have a mistake or a problem is that that is repeated. You have to learn from those things and you have to move forward. So, again, I think it's, when you're changing culture, it's top-down, but you have to communicate what your expectations are. Our door is always open to new ideas. Yours was a great one, and it's turned out very, very well for us, and I'd like to expand that program into other areas, not just domestic violence, not just youth engagement, but beyond that, especially in mental health, especially in homelessness, and some of the other issues that we're dealing in the city.
Let me keep moving to Curtis.
Good evening. In the past, we've, and currently, the, there has been a LGBT liaison that has been assigned to kind of come into the commission meetings and be that go-to person between the HPD and then in the city. However, from past innocence with Officer Byerga, we've seen, you know, her situation go down, and it's kind of a lot, speaking from personal experiences, for there just to be one person that's that link and to bear the weight of everything that comes with such a position as being a liaison for the HPD and the city. And so I want to know is, is HPD exploring possibly an affinity group model so that there's a group of individuals who would collectively like to be the links between the city and the HPD and not specifically one person to kind of have to bear all that may come with that, knowing the current camaraderie that exists within the Hartford Police Department?
Thanks for that question. And the short answer that Pastor Camp would probably want me to give would be yes.
Yes.
But I'll expand on it, but I'll expand on it just briefly. So, yeah, and it was, this was not my idea. Again, one of the benefits and one of the best parts about this job is getting out and talking to a lot of people, and that the affinity group model was suggested to me not long ago. And we already have, some of our EAP coordinator and a couple other folks within the department are putting that together as we speak, and we hope that that affinity group will be in place shortly. In the meantime, you know, I'm happy to go to the meetings as I have in the past and act as at least a sounding board to be that liaison until that group gets up and running. But that is a great suggestion, and we are doing that.
Thank you. Thank you. Pastor Holmes.
Good evening, Chief. Our question, as it's already been mentioned, in regards to training of officers. We know training is really vital to an officer. But in more particularly, we're wanting to know, is there a plan for cultural competence training? Training around our cultures? We all are aware that the issue that happened last year with the officers speaking a certain way to young men of color. And so we're looking to see whether or not there is a plan for ongoing competence training, not just when issues arise, but ongoing, quarterly, every year. What's put in place or what's the plan to put something in place? So the young boys of color, brown and black, are aware that when they are approached, that their culture is being respected before an officer acts?
That's a great question. So Hartford is a diverse community with a lot of cultures, religions, we have a lot here. That is an opportunity for us to engage, like we spoke to earlier, with folks to come in and talk to us about that. We have had some programs, some formal programs, where we have put officers, usually 15 to 20 officers, through at a time where we have had, they do one day a week for 10 weeks, and they go out into the different areas of the city and they learn about the history of Hartford, which I don't think enough of our police officers know about. There is a lot here that has shaped this area, this region, this state, and beyond. They also talk to business owners to further understand what kind of issues business owners face, you know, because it's easier, it's easy to go when a call comes in, like you said, and try to figure out a problem while it's happening. It's a lot harder, it's a lot harder to go out there and preemptively get those ideas. So, we've also met with religious leaders, different cultures within the city to expose our officers to the differences. The other thing that we did, which is important, I think is important, is we invited officers from our surrounding towns into that. So we had officers from East Hartford, West Hartford come in and get some exposure to our different cultures here in the city. Our residents leave the city, and when they do that, they should be interacting with law enforcement that understands them there as well. And the other departments have been really open to that idea. We also train these other departments in our academy. You know, when we have three, four, five, 10 seats available, we let these officers come in because our recruits are out there and interacting with the community. I don't think that we do enough of that. And that, you know, when you're trying to cram all the required training into a six-month academy, a lot of times, some of those important things are missed. We used to have Mothers United Against Violence come in and talk about the work that they do. And somehow, and I don't know how, but I was just made aware of it, that they don't do that anymore. So we will start doing that again. The other good tool for that is the Citizens Academy, which I think, we have some graduates of the Citizens Academy from yesteryear here. That provided an opportunity for people from the community to kind of come in and get a better understanding of the department. And just like I spoke to earlier, those members of the community then go back and they talk about it. They talk about like the policies, the procedures, the laws, some misconceptions, you know, shoot to kill is a common misconception, and they get an understanding for that. But again, I will, we'll talk more about how we can get that into the academy, even if we have to extend it for another week. A lot, as a lot of people know, our numbers really deteriorated over a period of time, and we're just now starting to build the department up, the strength of the department back up again, where, you know, I could afford to do another week of training or something like that, but it's a great suggestion.
Let me keep going. Alon.
So during the 2019 legislative session, advocates and community members successfully passed a state law called the Trust Act, which went into effect October of last year. And the Trust Act is a state law that prohibits state and local law enforcement agencies, such as municipal police, from honoring detain requests or otherwise enabling Immigration and Customs Enforcement to arrest our community members once they're already released from state or local custody. I mean, just quickly for y'all who may not know, ICE is able to exploit, communicate, and otherwise interface with state and local law enforcement institutions and agencies to locate and essentially kidnap people for deportation. Now that this state law has gone into effect, and Hartford has had its instances of high-profile instances of collaboration or apparent collaboration with ICE, I'm wondering how you would not only train Hartford police to respect the parameters of the Trust Act and everything and the provisions that it entails, but also how you, like you're saying, building, working relationships with the community and understanding the cultures of the city of Hartford as well. Hartford is also a very immigrant-dense city. I mean, I'm wondering how you would train your officers to respect the Trust Act and also help people feel that our neighborhoods and institutions aren't just places for feds to come run amok and take them away?
Thank you. So, when concerns about undocumented persons and ICE coming in and local law enforcement honoring detainers came up, you know, about four years ago, or a little less than four years ago, we had, I was in charge of policy in the department at the time as a captain, and we went out and we formulated a brand-new policy that mirrored the Trust Act then. And we went out right here in the library, myself and the mayor and Chief Revella, and invited members of the community to come in and see exactly how the police department works, how we do and don't deal with issues like that. As you know, the Trust Act does have, you know, some parameters where, you know, where there is a warrant, if there's a warrant signed by a judge, there are things that we do have to do. But short of that, we don't do anything. We do not enforce immigration law. That is not, that is not our job as local law enforcement. It's made very clear to our officers that is not our responsibility. We do not, we have actually not signed off on grants that asked us to make promises about working with ICE, because that is not, that is not, that is not our city. That's not the mayor's agenda, that's not mine, that's not law enforcement. When the Trust Act was updated, and it went into effect in October of 2019, we put out a brand-new policy that updated all of the new parts of that law. And that policy goes through a system called Power DMS, where every one of our officers is, must sign off on that policy. And we do short videos, they're, you know, between a minute and four minutes, when we update our policies that highlight the changes and what the new expectations are. So when we do that every time new public acts come out, whether they be October 1st, January 1st, whatever they might be, and the new Trust Act, the new version of the Trust Act, we did that same thing. And I can provide you, you know, with a copy of that policy. And I think you know that, you know, as a law enforcement agency, we have helped folks get fingerprinted when other law enforcement agencies wouldn't be involved in that, you know, and we're trying to build that trust, you know, one interaction at a time. But it's, under my administration and even in my recent recollection, we do not work with ICE in any of that capacity or share information.
Thank you. Ms. Beckman.
As a mother and resident in the city of Hartford for over 50 years, I have lost a child to violence in our city. I would like to know, what are your plans for helping families who are going through hard times when their children are taken away so soon?
Thank you for that question. So, we've worked very closely with Mothers United Against Violence and yourself to make sure that we are available to families. You know, a lot of times, the police department gets called to a situation, whether it be a homicide or a shooting or something tragic, we get into the, you know, the training kicks in, we get into this mode where we're outcome-oriented, right? We're trying to find the person that's responsible for the crime. One thing that we have learned from working with Mothers United Against Violence and others is that our responsibilities go past that. I know that Lieutenant Cicero, who's in charge of our Major Crimes Division, works very closely with you, and we always have detectives and officers and sometimes myself at the vigils. You know, we have engaged and we have committed financially to that assistance. You know, we don't, you know, we have pins that we wear, I just happen to not have it on this particular lapel that's saying "Never forget," and that's a, and that's a real thing, that's a promise. I think that, I don't think it's something that anyone would want to have to interact with us about when it comes to a violent crime or a homicide, but those that have realize that our detectives and our officers are compassionate and that they do follow through. And again, back to an earlier point, you know, following through with assistance, whether it be, you know, social assistance, following through with victims, is important for a number of reasons. One, a lot of times that becomes a cycle of violence, where a victim becomes your next offender, and offender becomes your next victim. So it's important for us to get in the middle of that, you know, and with the help of organizations like yours, we can make it clear that we can stop that cycle. So we will continue our commitment in that, in that work, and hopefully expand it, as we've discussed in the past, with some more assistance in that area.
Thank you. Deborah.
Last but not least?
No, you're not last. You're not last. I got some over here, too.
Okay, thank you so much, Chief. So my question is prevention. Mothers United Against Violence is now working to prevent, and the educational component of the organization is really key now. So we want to look closer at, obviously, implicit bias, because those are preconceived notions by officers and individuals, and we want to be able to engage even further as it relates to that issue.
And your question is?
My question, since I'm last. My question is, and this is, and this is the heart of my question, deadly force. We've done a little research on the deadly force issue. So what we would like to do is to talk to you a little bit about, or respond, about how are you planning to, in the future, and when you obviously get confirmed, what are some of your goals in that area? Because I know that the deadly force statute or that ordinance is somewhat vague in some sense, and from the national level to other entities across the country, police departments. So I think one of those, I think that's a really important issue, because we have been having a rash of gun violence and police officers actually going overboard in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, one thing that we have done, one thing for sure that we have done well is in our area of training and de-escalation and dealing with mental health. A lot of the officer-involved shootings, when you look at them and when you really get deep into them, are about, do involve somebody in mental health crisis. And so, there's a couple avenues. One policy, you know, our policy talks about, you know, the sanctity of human life, and that's, and that is not a policy statement that every department has, but ours does speak to that. Our training talks about de-escalation. You know, we have invested in technology like a simulator, where our officers can learn that while there could be a threat that requires them or that prompts them to take their firearm out, it doesn't mean that they have to use it. They can use de-escalation and things of that sort. I reflect back to when we were initially dealing with the last tragic officer-involved shooting that we had last year, and we had, we brought stakeholders in and we showed the video. And the video's hard to watch, but I remember having a conversation with some folks after that, where the car that was driven by the individual, Mr. Zeporta at the time, came at the officers in a couple different scenarios in that video, where the car was coming at the officers. And the comment was made, and it struck me as a real, a positive takeaway out of a real negative situation, was that, geez, a lot of other departments would have probably fired then. And I think that's a testament to our officers and how, you know, while we do have cultural issues within the department that need to be fixed, we also have a culture of officers de-escalating. The mayor spoke to it earlier. We actually had a situation earlier in 2019 where an individual that was involved in a murder in another town ultimately came to Hartford, and we found the vehicle and it was occupied by the individual that was driving the car. And the individual made statements later that it was his intention to be shot by the police. And he actually commented to the officers as they took him into custody that they had done a good job in preventing that from happening. Not to say that tragedies don't happen, but I think that, you know, here, at least in our community, our officers are well-trained, we have policies that are sound, and the expectations are laid out for that, and the officers do a tremendous job in de-escalating. And I dare say that we were doing that before it was a cool word.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you. The question is, are you planning to serve your position for a long term?
So, you know, I've had conversations with the mayor about my interim role, and I pledged to stay here as long as I was needed in that interim role, and my plan is to stay here and serve at the, you know, if confirmed, I plan to stay here and serve for Mayor Bronin as long as he will have me here as well.
Okay. The next one is, it's a longer one, but I'm going to condense it a little bit. What will you do to strengthen the relationships and improve transparency?
So, we've talked about that a little bit tonight. You know, we have, actually started under Chief Revella and has carried on. We have been a transparent department, whether it's because of a tragedy like an officer-involved shooting, or whether it's because of a disciplinary case, or whatever it might be. I have gone out, whether things are, whether things look good for the department or whether they don't, I have gone out, I have been in front of commissions, I've been in front of the council, I've been in front of residents, and we are open and transparent. A lot of the negative things that have hit the press in the last probably year or year and a half, many of them were things that we, as a department, uncovered, and we, as a department, shined a light on, even though they were negative. You know, to hide that, that stuff is a critical error, and we will not do that. In our officer-involved shootings and in other critical events, we open the doors for people to come to the department and have a dialogue with both myself and the mayor and other members of our command staff, and we will continue to do that. Being open and transparent is key. We have, and my pledge is that we will continue to open the door further and shine the light brighter.
This one's more sensitive. It says, "In 2018, you retired from Hartford Police and was soon rehired by HPD. After being rehired in 2018, you were taking home a six-figure pension on top of your HPD salary." HPD salary. Will you continue to receive the pension or, and a full-time and much higher salary as police chief?"
Good question. So, in 2018, I had a, like I said, I had a lengthy career here in the police department. I served under Chief Ravella. I pledged to Chief Ravella that I would stay here until the end of his tenure, which I did. When the, they went out and found Chief Rosato, I was tapped on the shoulder to do the transition to Chief Rosato. So, I stayed, I was a captain at the time. I stayed for that transition, spoke to Chief Rosato before he got here, after he got here. I worked with him very closely to try to bring him up to speed about a lot of the nuances and things about the police department and the community and worked with him closely. I had an opportunity to leave here and, and to get hired by another police department. Chief Rosato brought in Assistant Chief Medina as, as a trusted member of his command staff. Again, I was a captain at the time and at the time, it did not look like there was, there was any further for me to go in my career. I started in this job as a cadet. I was eligible to retire, actually two years before that, in 2016 and stuck around because of a promise I made to Chief Ravella and then a promise I made to transition to Chief Rosato. So, I retired to pursue the other job in law enforcement that was a deputy chief position. So, it was advancing and moving forward in my career, which was my goal at the time. After I retired and before I accepted that position, I was asked by Chief Rosato to come back in an assistant chief role and I think that was because the department needed at that time, somebody that had the institutional knowledge, someone that had been there. I was in the middle of a lot of projects at that time, including body worn cameras and other things like that. So, I came back. I was, I did collect a pension when I came back. When I left, I started collecting the pension. When I came back, I continued to collect the pension and the salary for the assistant chief role. While that is unorthodox, it was kind of an unorthodox situation that, that led to that. You know, I did not, you know, I didn't leave here with the intention of double-dipping. I left here to collect my pension and go collect a salary somewhere else and then ended up back here. Now, as, you know, as chief, I was, as far as I understand it, I will continue to collect my pension, but will not be eligible for the, the full chief's salary based on a 2016 ordinance. The, the full chief's salary, I will collect 50% of that, which would actually equate to about a 40-something thousand dollar pay cut to take the new position.
Thank you. A couple more. We're right at the time we're going to have to, to end this. This one has a lot of words in the beginning and I'm not going to read all of them. Some of them, I'm just not going to read, but I think the gist of it is, "How will the community feel safe with cops who support and align with sexual assaulters?" And so, I would ask this way, how will you support those who are victims of sexual assault? What is the protocol that you would want to improve upon?
So, a while back at one of the meetings that I discussed earlier where I was out and talking to the community, a young lady came to me with a tragic story about having been sexually assaulted, having come to the Hartford Police Department years ago and having her case not taken seriously and not being followed through with. It was, it was a heart-wrenching story and it honestly made me sick to my stomach. I had conversation with her after that meeting. She now does, she does sexual assault crisis intervention and consulting and I, I proposed an opportunity for her to come and help me change the policy on the way we do business and change our training and she gladly accepted that. We have since formed a good relationship. She helped us put out a new response to sexual assault policy that is, that is now active in the department. It has been for about six months now. She also brought in other, other community, other, not community leaders, but other people that dealt in crisis intervention and sexual assault crisis and they helped as well and we have now formulated a really good relationship. So, you know, spoiler alert, that, that's the next area where I would like to embed a worker in the department. I think that that, that is a great opportunity and, and she has pledged to help me fill that position.
Time is running out. Let me, let me just ask this one, this one also had quite a few words in it, but if I can distill it, I think it's asking or saying, "There is nothing more dangerous than an unstable person with a gun. Perhaps we can reduce the suicide rate." You hear a question in that, what do we do in our community from the standpoint of the police department to, to make a difference with the gun violence, with the suicide rates?
I mean, we all know that some of that, some of that, excuse me, is accessibility to firearms. We've worked very, very closely on coalitions in both locally and in the northeast region. We do have a lot of our guns in the city of Hartford that come from out of state and up here, states with different, with looser laws and things of that nature. You know, I think, you know, number one, we have to continue to work to reduce accessibility. That means, you know, the recent law change about storage of firearms is important, having the ability to enforce that. I have read unusual occurrence reports where someone has come to the city and reported that their gun was stolen from their car because it was left unsecured. We make arrests in those cases and, and that's important. We have to make sure that accessibility to firearms is reduced. With, as far as suicide itself, again, it's partnering with our, our mental health, our mental health workers. I mean, I think a tragedy would be if an officer, you know, were to respond out to a, to a mental health situation, not provide services that are available and that could help and then that person ended up committing suicide. So, I think a lot of that goes back to us teaming up with social service providers on, on a number of issues so that, that that doesn't happen.
And the last one, well, let's see, how do, how do you, in what ways has the development of department priorities incorporated or will incorporate the voice of the neighborhoods?
Great question to, to end on.
Whoever's question it was, I kind of fixed it a little bit.
So, when I took over in, in April, one of the big things that I wanted to do is get out there and, and, you know, NRZs are, are key, but get out there and talk to as many people as I could. As I started hearing reoccurring themes, we started taking action to address those reoccurring themes. We, we implemented a illegal dumping community officer, a community service officer. We've never had one of those before. We didn't do it because I thought it was a good idea. We did it because I heard it over and over again at residents that were sick of seeing mattresses and other things on the side of the road. That officer has since made several arrests and, and worked in conjunction with 311, not just to make arrests, but also to help identify areas and get them cleaned up faster. That came from the community. We, we also, we've also implemented some measures to increase our, our response times. We want to, we want to get to some of these calls quicker and that came from listening to residents talking about how when they had an issue, they waited X number, fill in the gap, X number of hours for an officer to get there. So, we looked at strategically how we could improve that quickly. One was we realized that our new accident forms were 12 pages long and we had police officers that were, that were held up, filling out 12-page accident reports, which is a state form that we can't control. And, and while they're doing that for two hours, the calls for service are backing up. So, we implemented, I implemented a four-person accident response team. It serves a couple functions. One, frees up officers to take calls for service in our community. Two, these officers have, now have training to better take accident reports. You know, everybody, accident reports go to insurance companies, they go to court, they go all over the place. So, it's important that those investigations are comprehensive. We've also, we are also implementing in the coming week or two, I just had a meeting with our ES&amp;T Director Sue Webster, a department directive on our sergeants taking more of a role in, in interjecting with calls that hold for a long time. So, those are all issues that come from conversations with members of the community, calls from members of council, you know, whether it be Integral House calling us about a collaborative effort. All of those ideas, if possible, we take and we run with. And really, that's, I think, how we become a more responsive police department that serves the community better is listening to people and engaging in those ideas.
Chief, I don't know exactly what's going to come next for you in this process, but I want to give you these cards that you might hold on to them and be reminded that you work for us. Thank you. All right. And I want to thank the panel, each of you. I wish there were more time for more dialogue and questions, but thank you. And Chief, Mayor, you go. I think we're done.
Thank you so much, everybody. I just wanted to say thank you again to Pastor Camp, thank you to our panel, to everybody for being here and please remember that this is broadcast and available at HPA TV and look forward to seeing you all soon. Have a great night and be safe.